Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody here to the July 15th, 2022 Board of Supervisors Meeting. And Mr. Slay, would you give us an indication?
I'll be glad to. Probably coming for you, acknowledging that we need your presence and your power. Probably we need your wisdom and your discernment to be given to us today so that we can effectively operate the government of the county. What a privilege it is to be able to enjoy the freedoms that we have and continue to have here in our country where we can participate in our own government. And these gentlemen, Lord, who have committed themselves, in a sense, their own families, Lord, who they are as men, they have committed themselves to serve this community. And you've given them skills and abilities to do that. And so, Father, I pray today that you give them that extra measure of wisdom that they need so that they can discern what's in the best interest of all citizens of the county. Father, I pray that you would continue to protect the men and women who serve and protect us every day. That you would bless them in their work, that they would be safe and secure in your hand, that you would bring them home safely to their families in Christ's name.
Amen.
Thank you, Craig.
On public comments, I have Kelly Foster and Scott May, and I don't see either one of them in here.
Are they out in the hall, man? No?
You want to check? Mike Farm, what did y'all decide to do on the kind of verdict? You want to go ahead and do the public comment on?
Yeah, I don't even know that the public comment will... I think we just go run the agenda.
Okay.
I think we run the agenda right now, and then we'll paint that robe when we get there on that. That's good with you?
All right.
Bye-bye.
Okay. All right, let's move on to old business. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 5?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion approved. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All approve? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. Cooper?
Morning, Lance.
Good morning, y'all. Doing all right?
Yes, sir.
How are you?
I'm here. We have a petition for change for the assessment of the 21 real property, personal property assessment rolls.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we have a...
Oh, excuse me.
All opposed. Motion carried.
Request to void the 2020 tax sale for parcel number I-13-94 due to an erroneous assessment and the aforementioned parcel to be refunded any tax sale purchase.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Mr. Harris? Good morning.
Mr. President, I'd like to take A, B, C, and D together. It's all District One permits with Windstream.
All right. I make a motion to approve A, B, C, and D.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I want them to discuss it.
Any further discussion?
You said, "I want to discuss it." I want to discuss it.
And we have met and talked. I know this is their first round with this, so we have met and talked and reviewed the jobs with them.
All right.
I would like to, while I'm up here, introduce Mike Walker with AT&amp;T. We had a meeting with them the other day, and he wants to go through a few things with y'all on the AT&amp;T side. So, y'all kind of deal with Mr. Walker for a few minutes.
Absolutely. Come on up, Mr. Walker.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How are you all this morning?
We're okay.
I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you to represent AT&amp;T, to address some of the concerns that the county has regarding to our infrastructure build and some of the things that we're doing. First of all, just let me say that it has always been AT&amp;T's intent to follow the permitting ordinance and do the things that the county requires. And we do understand from the meeting we had last week with Mr. Slay and Mr. Harrison and Mr. Parker that we have not been as thorough in following those ordinances as possible. So, we have talked about things that we plan to do to improve that and be able to address the county's concern in a timely manner. I have a list that I will share with the board and also with other gentlemen that I've mentioned of key contact people. So, when our contractors go out and things are not done right, you can call someone directly with AT&amp;T that will be responsible for getting the repairs done, get everything straightened out to that end. And going forward, I would also have my card that I will leave with you as well, so you can call me directly. These are some of the things that we would hope that will help address some of the issues and prevent those things from happening that have happened in the past, keeping it from happening going forward. If I may approach the board with my list.
Absolutely.
And these are all people who are aware of where we are, and they are committed to... Thank you, sir. They are responsive. You can call them directly. And... My card, or you can call me directly in the event that you have issues, get it hold of someone. I think I've got your card. I think I've passed out a couple times. I don't need it.
I don't need it.
And I have a couple. The challenge that we have is, you know, we have subcontractors who come in and do work, and sometimes they're not as familiar with the process. So, we will make every effort to bring them on board, train them on the process that the county has in place to make sure that they understand what their obligation is in terms of being out in the county right-of-way and doing work. And also, as a backup, if there ever any issues that come up, that also that you'll be able to call anyone on that list or call myself, and we'll be able to get those issues addressed and taken care of. With that said, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions that y'all have regarding the permits that I think we have, one that's pending at about three or four that's on hold pending that meeting and what we were trying to address.
So, if I may just kind of set it up. First, let me say again, on behalf of the county, how much I appreciate the fact that AT&amp;T brought to a meeting where we tried to get this information, a number of individuals. And that is unusual in this day and age. So, I appreciate very much their willingness to come and to sit and to discuss some of the issues and to take those very seriously. I was very encouraged during the meeting that they were very much in tune with the county's concerns and how it was impacting the residents. And so, I think we made great progress in that meeting, as it was to be understood that the county has some requirements with respect to how the infrastructure is to be installed so that it creates as little disruption as possible.
Absolutely.
And that's a difficult deal when you're in the middle of a right-of-way that has already been accessed by a number of utilities, and you've got some conflict issues that are already there. And so, the county needed to hear and did receive information that talked about the struggle that the utility providers have to try to make sure that they don't disrupt existing infrastructure. So, we're all trying to figure out how to best navigate this situation and work with each other to make that happen. So, this is a very encouraging step in the right direction, in my opinion. They do have some permits that are pending, and one that was halted so that we could have the conference together. And I don't know if we have a specific list, Mike, but what I would suggest is, I think we know what those are.
Right.
So, what we would propose, gentlemen, is that you would allow us to move forward with those permit approvals, that we do that even today as a contingent item to make sure... In other words, approve whatever is pending, contingent upon the completion of the review of the permit request for those that are pending. But go ahead and release the one that we held up that already had a permit.
Craig, and I think, just talking to Mike, I think the pending ones have been before the board and have been approved.
Okay.
They've just put on hold. So, I think...
Yeah. So, I think we're ready to release those. Y'all have already approved them. So, I would ask that we add that item to the agenda and that we move forward with that.
Can I make a few comments?
Go ahead.
Real quick. Here's Daniel's issue from the reservoirs people.
Yes, sir.
From District Two. The issue I'm having is with your contractors. I think the initial plans and all that you guys come forth is spot-on, and you're doing everything that the county's asking you to do. The problem is, when you come down below and hire your contractors out, and then they sub it out again, then they sub it out again, you've got people working in these subdivisions that aren't following y'all's rules.
Right.
That's the problem. And the issue that comes in when they go to these HOAs is these HOAs and these neighborhoods need to be aware you guys are in there. Well, that's kind of being done and kind of not. You know, Winwood Oaks subdivision was a mess we had over the last few months, where HOA might not have known you guys were coming in there. And if you're going to deviate off those plans, the county needs to be aware of it along with the HOA, that, hey, we're getting outside this right-of-way, and we're getting up maybe closer into a yard or further away from whatever it is. There has to be... To me, this whole thing is fixed if AT&amp;T, I'm saying as the main person in charge, does a better job of communicating with the residents. And then, when things happen, that there's a contact number that HOA has, you reach back out as the residents begin to complain.
Yes, sir.
That's been the biggest disconnect. And then, once the lines are established, that there's accurate red lines that come back to the county and say, "Look, we had... I totally get you going to an area that you originally planned to put fiber in a certain spot, and you can't go that way for whatever reason, and you've got to adjust, and we're totally fine with that." But you still have to come back and say, "Hey, look, we're altering the plans. We're not going to fuss about it. We're going to say, 'Fine, alter your plans.'" Make those decisions. But there's a total loss in communication on the same side.
Yes, sir.
The one or two things that's happened that I applaud AT&amp;T on is that when you've made some damages to water lines and things like that, you have notified our groups to where we know we don't have water in certain areas, that we've hit certain water lines. Like, for example, the issues over on Camilla Trail and those ones at Peel Alley Shore, you've hit those water lines. I get accidents happen, and I appreciate you guys coming back saying, "We've hit water lines. That's going to affect the water. I'm not worried about drinking water or washing clothes. I'm worried about fire suppression water."
Fast, correct.
Right, for those type of things. And the fire department guys have know that. And if they know that, they can call for additional water sources. So, that's okay. Thank you for doing it that way. But the notification, when you have problems and having to move stuff, has to continue. But we have to have the communication, especially in my area, with the neighborhoods, that if you're getting outside of what your permit says you have to do, I get it. There's reasons for that.
Right.
But we need to know about it. And we need to know about it so we can educate the people that are there. That's where you have the biggest bust in AT&amp;T, because they don't see it as a third-party contractor. They see it as AT&amp;T.
It's AT&amp;T.
I mean, they see y'all as one face, though it's not. And I totally get what the problems you have. That's been my biggest complaint with AT&amp;T, ceasefire, or all of them.
Right.
On that same side. Because then, when you come back, not you, when they come back and something's been damaged, and you say, "Well, my red line shows the wires are right here." Well, they're not, because you had to move, right?
And that shouldn't happen.
I need the accuracy.
Either way. That shouldn't happen anyway. Whenever there's a change in plans, we should come back. If the contractor goes out and sees that we can't place the fiber, the cable, where it's on the drawing, then they should come back, and we need to re-engineer it, re-permit it, whatever we have to do.
And we're going to be good with it.
Right.
We just need... We need the communication side of it. That's the biggest thing. The last thing that... I'm not going to speak on the board's behalf, but the last thing on my behalf, that I don't want a lot of government regulation.
Right.
I can't stand it. But there has to be some checks and balances not to abuse the people that we're having to put the fiber in these things down it, right? We can't abuse their property. Though it's the right-of-way, it's not really their property officially, but they maintain it. And they put time and money and care and love into that section of property. It just gets ran and said, "You wouldn't want your property done like that." I know I wouldn't want mine, right? So, we've got to have just some good neighbor-type stuff on how we treat these people when we come in there. That's my biggest issue.
And that's one of the things, when I mentioned earlier, the fact that we need to educate our contractors, the things that you're talking about is exactly what we're going to do going forward. When we go into a neighborhood, we will reach out to the homeowners association, find a contact, let them know, because I think they do a good job of sending out blast emails to the membership of things that's going on.
But we skipped some of them lately. Well, we hadn't done that.
That's going forward is what we're going to be making after.
That's why, when it comes up on the agenda, I get sick to my stomach.
Right.
And I almost... I get so... I start sweating, and it bothers me. So, I shouldn't want... I ought to be happy, you know, because now they're getting fiber put in these places. And that's the kind of stuff they need, and we want it there. We want the stuff on. But it shouldn't be an ulcer when we get a call that, you know...
A lot of the things you're discussing are true. They are internal issues that we have made a commitment to address with our primary contractor and also the subs that they'd be working with, because these things shouldn't be happening, quite frankly. If the job requires that the cable is 20 feet off center line, then they can't place it 10 feet off center line. I mean, if it requires it to be 36 inches deep, they can't place it 18 inches deep. And that's something that we have to work very closely with.
And here's the same side... Last thing I'm going to say, Brad, I'll shut up. But if you get to a point to where it doesn't work to be 36 inches.
Right.
All I'm telling you to do is, instead of just doing it, call Mike's office and say, "Look, there's a special issue right here that I can't go 36 inches," and let his crew look at it, and they say, "You know, you're right. You can't go 36 inches here." So, let them give you a waiver to do it.
Right.
Not just do it and tear something up, and it makes it look like you're just going rogue, not you, but your group is going rogue, right? So, when you have issues that come up, I honestly believe we have a true common sense approach of our management teams that are out there. Just come to them and say, "I got a problem."
Right.
They're going to adjust as situations deem necessary, you know? But you just can't just say, "Heck with it. I'll do it my own way."
Well, and that shouldn't happen. We're not going to do that. And I do understand that you, in this case, is AT&amp;T, and I take that responsibility. I'm representing them. And when our contractors cut somebody, you're not looking at them, you're looking at us.
You've got good leadership at AT&amp;T.
Yes, sir.
You've got terrible contractors.
Yeah. We're going to get that...
I mean, and it's not necessarily the initial contractor. It's three contractors below that.
I know. The subs.
It's three contractors below them, you know?
Yes, sir.
Devaney's a great group of people. Phenomenal. But the subs beneath them may not be, you know? So, you've got several layers of this onion. Y'all need to peel back to get control of it. It's not...
That was made a bunch of weeks clear last week.
Everybody on this list are good management people.
Right.
They're not the problems, right? AT&amp;T's not the problem. But four layers below your contractors are terrible.
And that's what we've got to address. And those are the people that can get that fixed. So, by, you know, by letting us know, that's one of the things we talked about. I think there was a list of locations, if you will, where we've had issues. When we get that list, we can go back and identify which contractors were on those jobs. So, we have to not use them anymore or have a discussion with them that we can make that adjustment. So, when we get that list of locations, then we'll get that addressed. So, this has everybody's attention. The focus is on getting this fixed.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions, Mr. Walker?
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, we need a motion to add this.
A motion to add that the release of the one permit... I'm sorry, the one work project that was already in place, and also to approve the pending applications that the board has already approved but held until we could have the meeting. That's to add it.
All right. I've got a motion to add by Daniel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Jay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. All right.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item we have on the agenda is on the Andrew Chapel Road reconstruction project. We recommend an approval of payout number 10 to Site Masters, Inc., in the amount of $169,162.88 in authority to issue the check.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Daniel. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, may I introduce one item of further discussion?
All right, go ahead.
This may have already been resolved. I'm raising it only because I didn't have a chance to talk to Tim or to Mike. And so, it may be a non-issue. But with respect to this particular contractor, we have been notified by a subcontractor that they are continuing to wait a payment for some material that was provided to the general at the site and has been installed in the job, that they have not been paid. And so, I would ask us to consider amending the motion to approve to allow some discussion with Site Masters to make sure that that sub has been paid in full before we issue this check.
All right.
It's a little atypical. We don't typically get in the middle of general contractors and subs, but this is one occurrence where we're right at the end of the project, and I don't want there to be any hiccups at all with getting our project completed.
This won't hinder getting progress or process completed by holding the check up.
Now, they fully control... Site Masters fully controls how this goes. We just need proof that they've paid the sub, and we immediately tender the check.
Can I change it to hold this check until we're satisfied that Site Masters... So, we don't have to come back in two weeks?
Maybe pending.
Yeah, pending. Can we do that?
You can approve a payment contingent upon proof of payment of the sub.
Yeah. Okay. That's my...
There's nothing else to do at that point.
That's my motion.
All right. So, your motion... All right. Motion by...
Yeah. And so, it's clear...
Let's make it clear.
The information that I have right now, I'm not even conversant enough to tell you exactly who the sub is. I don't really care. I just want to make sure that whoever it was that contacted us and said we hadn't been paid gets paid. That's it. So, the Site Masters and our folks on our side can get their heads together and make sure we get adequate proof of payment.
Yep. Okay.
So, your motion is to pending on Site Masters paying their sub or... That's your motion?
Yes.
Daniel, second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. Motion carried.
Item B, Mr. President. We've been given the go-ahead from state aid. We're asking for authority to advertise SAP 6119M. That's the scrub ceiling and ultra-thin overlay of a portion of Old Highway 471 and Shell Hill Road.
And what road?
Shell Hill Road.
Motion carried.
And I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Like sign. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Slay?
Yes.
If we're going too fast, we need to slow it down.
No. Just keep moving.
Item A, item B, item C, and item D, Ms. President, are all to set public hearings for July 28 at 9:00 a.m., and I would ask that we take all of those as one motion, please.
I'll make that motion to set A, B, C, and D.
I'll second.
Jared, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? Like sign. Motion carried. All right.
Item E under my section, Mr. President, is a public hearing on Old South Excavation conditional use permit. This is on Rankin Road. This is District Four property. Old South Excavation is seeking a conditional use permit to mine four acres out of a 222-acre parcel on Rankin Road. The applicant filed a notice of exempt operation with DEQ. The application shows an estimated completion date of April 1st of 2023. Property is zoned RE1. Hearing notice was published in the paper. The property has been posted. We received one call in opposition due to, quote, "Too much truck traffic dropping large debris, large chunks of junk coming off the trucks." So, that's probably a technical detail there we need to get some help on. But that was the one complaint that we received. We'll open that public hearing, and I will ask if there is anyone here in person to speak in opposition to the Old South Excavation conditional use request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Ms. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. Let's see here. We do have some proposed conditions that we would want to address with you. I do see the gentleman who is with Old South Excavation in the boardroom. So, if the board has precedent with respect to the applicant, we have that individual here, and we welcome him here. Hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's during the daylight hours, obviously. When we go to daylight saving time, that work needs to stop at dark, which would be roughly 5:00 p.m. So, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. once you hit daylight saving time. Signage, we would want some protective signage there, trucks entering highway to allow the motor in public to have some notice. We want to consider this as not more than a one-year permit. We want to do a reinspection before we ask for any extension of the permit, okay? We would ask that the applicant maintain the appropriate gravel and/or slag entrance and protection there at the point of entry onto Rankin Road. And if needed, because of the site conditions, we would ask that the applicant be prepared to have a water truck on-site if that becomes necessary. And we would ask, obviously, we're going to try to monitor that, and take any feedback that we get from the public so that I think we will know when it's time to have that discussion about a water truck. Does that seem reasonable? Yes. All right. So, gentlemen, those would be the conditions that we... This is a conditional use request. We'd ask you to set these conditions.
Steve, do you have any comments or anything?
Yes. Mike, Harrison, I know we have video of our roads for our road plan, but can you make sure that we have up-to-date video of that road? And, sir, will you take pictures of the same road, Rankin Road, to where if there's a problem... I mean, and when you see a problem, call the road manager that day and say, "Look, there's a weak place, soft spot. I see it." Most of the time, we can handle it. When you don't report it, it ends up being a big hole, then we have problems. So, going into it, everybody knows the rules, and just stay with them, and we'll all be happy. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the...
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. Motion carried. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wood.
Ms. President, the next item under my section is item F. This is a public hearing on the county-initiated rezoning request at Mulliken Road. It's a District One property. The county is initiating a rezoning change from RE1 to RE1A. This would impact 16 parcels that are located on Mulliken Road. This is a mixed area with site-built and manufactured homes. Properties on the south side of Mulliken are zoned RE1A. The notice of hearing was published in the paper, and the property is posted. We have not received any calls in opposition. I'm going to open that public hearing. I will ask if there is anyone here to speak on the matter of the county-initiated rezoning change from RE1 to RE1A for 16 parcels on Mulliken Road. Is anyone here to speak on that matter? Ms. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. The purpose of the change is as follows. You've got immediately on the opposite side of Mulliken Road, you've got RE1A-zoned property. So, this property being immediately adjacent is subject to a rezoning, appropriate rezoning, because the character and the condition of the neighborhood is such that it hasn't changed to the degree that it needs to be zoned RE1, which is a residential estate zone as opposed to an ag zone. By moving these parcels to ag or having a component of ag in them, it allows for existing mobile homes and manufactured housing in the event that they are destroyed, they burn, they're hit by a tornado. Those can be replaced. In the current context, as RE1, if any existing non-conforming use, which would be a manufactured home sitting in RE1, were to be destroyed beyond 50% of its value, cannot be replaced. And so, the folks out there are of the opinion that they ought to have the option to go back with what they've got or to make repairs to what they have and not get caught in a trick bag of violating the zoning ordinance. That's the whole purpose behind it. So, I think it'd be appropriate to take action.
They still would have to come to us for...
That's correct.
Approval.
That's correct.
Correct. I make motion approve. Second.
Our motion made by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Like sign. Motion carried.
That's right. Mr. Morrison, a mobile home permit and... Mr. Morrison, a, a, a mobile home permit in RE1A does require conditional use, so the board gets to address it.
That's right. That's what I'm saying. It's not just open, open target, yeah.
Item G is a board order that, that allows the board, this board, to give a name to a private drive that has not been named. This road intersects Mount Helm Road immediately east of the intersection of Mount Helm and Mississippi Highway 25. The, the name of the road is to be Mount Helm Trail. You are authorizing the 911 addressing, the department, to cause notice letters to be mailed to any affected property owners. You're authorizing all county departments to take any actions that will be required with respect to the naming of this private drive. Nothing contained in this board order will be interpreted to mean that the county is agreeing to accept this private drive for public maintenance. It will not be accepted for public maintenance. It will remain a private drive. What you're doing is simply naming this private drive so that emergency response is more organized in this area. We have a hard time explaining that they need to go to a private drive that has no name that's somewhere close to Highway 25 on Mount Helm. So, we need, we need to better be, be able to police that part of that. That's what we're asking you to do and so we would, we would request action on this item.
Do I have a motion to give, I guess, 911 addressing authorization to name this private drive? I'll make that motion.
It's not your district.
Second. You ain't got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carry. All right.
Item H, gentlemen, is a, is consideration of and potential action to approve an amended MOU between Rankin County and the City of Richland. This amended MOU is necessitated by current circumstances. Back in 2014, 2014, the tax collector at the time and the City of Richland put their heads together. The City of Richland was constructing its, what would then be its new city hall. It's not new anymore, but it was at that time. And so, there was an arrangement made so that the tax collector could locate a satellite location at the City of Richland City Hall. And the board, this, that board at the time indicated its willingness to participate in some of the cost of construction of the city hall. And so, through that arrangement, we ended up with a tax collector satellite location. In 2018, the tax assessor requested and received authorization from this board to stand up a satellite tax assessor location in the City of Richland and use the same space. And that happened, but we did not, there was not a follow-up to amend the original MOU to allow for both the collector and the assessor to share that space. So, this is a cleaning up the old records and amending that old MOU to state what are the facts on the ground. And that is that both a collector and an assessor representative is operating out of the City of Richland City Hall Satellite Office. So, I just need a motion to approve that and we can get that sent off to Richland.
Hey, here, here's one thing I'd, I'd like to suggest to do if we could. I want to talk about it a little more just to get right. Because like, you think you said 2014, the minutes I found like 2011.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
I, I may have the wrong year, Daniel.
Yeah, I just want to, I, I want to research it just to be sure we're right on everything. I, I don't want to make a hasty jump without looking at it. Not saying it's wrong or what we're trying to clean up or do, because I know we made a motion in 18 when I was here, when we created that office, but the motion on the minutes just show us that we authorized payment for that office. It doesn't say we approved that office on the minutes.
Right.
That's why I just want to be sure, I'm not ready, Daniel's not ready to take action on this. I just want to research it and be sure I've got all my stuff in front of me before I vote on it. That's just me, but...
Have you looked at it?
Yes, I have. In fact, so this, this came about from questions that were raised during our annual audit, looking at the MOU that was in place and asking the question, "How does this relate to the tax assessor?" And so, this actually comes as a recommendation to us from the Department of Audit. This is the way to clarify in the records that this is what you're doing so that there is authorization in the minutes for what you're doing.
Yes, and see, that's kind of the way I was reading it. I, I was reading it that on the minutes that we approved payment for the second office that was down there, that the assessor's office gets an additional fee for that and we approved it.
Yeah.
We approved the payment. But I can't find where we approved the office to be down there.
And that's what, that's what this action would be to do.
So, I think, I think, just kind of refreshing my memory on the whole thing, the action was I was making the assumption that the office was approved to be able to pay it, right? So, if that office is there and there's a second office there, then the payment's good, right? I mean, as far as the fees that are charged, it's all legal, but then the statutes, the statutes referenced in that motion. I just, I just wanted to look at it for myself. I just saw it just as, well, the other night when I was looking at the minutes, I just want to, I need to do some stuff for me.
Okay.
But that's just me. I may have other votes to do it.
What is, this has been going on for a few years.
Yes, sir.
What is the problem with allowing us two weeks?
Oh, there's no problem at all. We just need to, we need to do it.
And here's my thing, I don't have any problem at all with the assessor's office being there in Richland.
Right.
I mean, I, I think it's a good functional thing to have.
Yes.
I just want...
I'd like to study it too. They didn't bring it up to us because they were happy the way it was done. You know, they, they want us to take some corrective action and you are telling us how to do it.
Yep.
But we're not as smart as you. So, if you don't mind.
I'm, I'm along for the ride, gentlemen.
I'm good on putting it on the next agenda.
Yeah.
To, to look at. I just want to do some research on it in my own...
Gotcha.
I don't search minutes as good as Janice, since Janice is gone.
So, we're just going to...
The desk is cleaner.
We're going to table it to the next...
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't have to have a motion or anything.
Yeah, so let's, just to clarify, are we tailing to the work session? Are we going to table it to the first, all this?
I don't care. I, I just, I'm giving you the...
Why don't we just table, we'll table it to the...
I just want to look at it. Because the only thing I can find on the minutes is that in 2018, when we were on the board, minus young Bradley over there, we, we took action to approve payment for that second office, which by doing that, I think I was making the assumption that the second office was legally there, right? And I'm not saying it was not. I was just assuming that there was already approval.
I thought it was something that happened here.
Sir.
I did though, we had an option for...
No, I, I think, I think for a satellite location, this board has to approve that. That's not automatic.
Yeah, so like in 11, the minutes show that we approved the collector's office to have an office there.
Yes.
So, with the office already existing there, that another county office went into it, I guess in my mind, I thought we already got one, it doesn't really matter, right?
I think everybody assumed...
So, we were just paying and we agree the office needs to be down there.
That's correct.
I just want to...
And everybody assumed we're already occupying the space, right? With the tax collector satellite operations there, we're already occupying the space. So, nobody thought, just being frank and honest, nobody thought, "Oh, we need to go back and amend that old MOU to state in that old MOU that the assessor also has access to the facility." And by the way, the only people that appear to be bothered, they're not the board, they're not the assessor or the collector, or the City of Richland. Apparently, the only people that are bothered is the auditors. Yeah.
And that's what's got me, because here, this is my thing, if we, and I'm just, Daniel talking hypothetically, right? If the auditor's office has a problem with how it's done and they want us to clean it back up, have we been paying the money improperly for the last three years, four years, I don't even, can't do math now, back to 18, however long that's been? Do we need to ratify that from this day forward? I mean, I'm, I'm all for starting today, making that an official assessor's site for whatever.
Yep.
But if we did it improperly and it's caught their attention, like Gaines said, I just want to research that we're right.
To my knowledge, there's been no issue raised about the fact that the assessor has been paid to have a satellite location in Richland. I, I've not heard anything from anyone that there is an issue with that. Literally, it relates to what is the authority to occupy that space there.
Yeah.
So, this, this was the recommended approach. I'm, I'm good. I would, I would request that our motion to table have the date certain, which is July 28th. And so, we will table action on this item until July 28th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does that work?
Yeah, thank you.
Do I have a motion to table this till the 28th?
I think you can just do it, I think, Ken. Brad just do it as a present.
I, I need, we need a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to table.
Till the 28th of this month. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carry.
All right, the next item is a discussion of our Army Corps of Engineers permitting and pending application, MDQ, for our ARPA matching funds and potential action related to the preparation of our ARPA matching fund application. So, on this particular item, here's your update. The, one, one core permit has been submitted. This is on the Mill Creek project and at least two more core permit applications are on the precipice of being committed, permit, submitted for review. We have a meeting next Wednesday, the 20th, with the Army Corps of Engineers in Vicksburg to discuss the state ARPA matching program permitting responsibilities. And so, I'm scheduled to have multiple telephone conferences even today because we are expecting MDEQ to finally submit and post its FAQ guidance on the state matching application. As we sit here right now, we, the county, no counties, no water associations, no one in the state is fully apprised of exactly what a MDEQ ARPA permit is supposed to have in it. We're all waiting.
Right.
And so, much of what we're trying to do with our matching program is subject to finding out more from DEQ even as soon as today about exactly what they're looking for in the applications. And so, we have set our core meeting for next Wednesday in the hope that we will have better guidance, maybe as soon as today from DEQ, about the kinds of things we need to be asking the corps in relation to our deal. So, let me help all of us get focused on where we stand right now today. Where we stand right now today is the county is holding ARPA proceeds that have been delivered to Rankin County by the federal government. Roughly $25 to $26 million is on deposit. We have indicated very clearly to anybody that wants to know that we intend to implement and move forward our stormwater management program. We call it our Restoration and Rehabilitation Program. And we have, it, to some degree and in some form, we have identified as many as 45 to 50 separate components of our program that we intend to address using ARPA money. We can't do all 45 to 50 with the $25 million that we have given to Rankin County by the federal government. So, we are going to go to DEQ and ask that the state step in and invest with us. And we are asking as much as the law that they pass in the past session will provide, which is a dollar-for-dollar match. If we get what we want, we will have somewhere around $50 million to put towards stormwater restoration and rehabilitation across the county. So, this is a huge program. It's a very important program. It's badly needed and, and we've all talked about that at length, but there are some logistics here that we've got to be careful with. And one of those is making sure that we understand what our permitting requirements are going to be for any blue line stream that we impact with our projects. Not every project we do is going to have a blue line stream. Not every project that we do is going to need some core input, but, but many are. And so, we've got to be careful about that. So, the best thing that I can tell you today is this, there are, there is one project in particular that is awaiting permit approval. There are at least two more projects that will be in that same position soon. And I appreciate your thoughtfulness and your patience with your team as we struggle to try to make sure we check all the boxes.
All right.
There's your update. That's all, I don't need any action. I don't need you to do anything because everything that needs to be done has been done.
I just want you to get up and slam your finger in the door, you get out of the car, to walk into Corps of Engineers. So, sleigh's online. I need, I need, there's two sleighs. There's good sleigh, bad sleigh. I need bad sleigh to go to Corps of Engineers, get this stuff straight because...
Oh, mercy.
They're the walking human rain delay at Corps of Engineers.
Yes, they are. And I'm going to do everything I can, Daniel. I will commit everything that I, if it's humanly possible, I'm going, I'm going to commit to do it. Ms. President, if I may, item J, ratification of our emergency stop work order or temporary cessation of construction traffic on the following public roads. Countryside Drive, Lake Terrace Place, Plantation Boulevard, Del Rio Drive, Durango Drive. These are roads that provide access to or within what we know is Palaberty Subdivision. So, I'm just simply asking to ratify that emergency stop work order that was implemented earlier this week. We can do that action and then move to item K, which is a discussion of whether or not that needs to continue.
Do I have a motion? Stop work order.
Yeah, I want to, before I do a motion, can, can I talk about it for two seconds?
Yeah, so item K, Daniel, if you'll look, item K is our discussion of what we...
Yeah, you just want to ratify it.
All I want to...
So, I'll make a motion to ratify the emergency stop work order for item J. That's what we've already done. So, I'll make a motion to ratify.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carry.
As we get into the discussion item, Mr. President, on item K, Mr. Hicks has a video that he wants to display and demonstrate. This will, I think, to, at least to some degree, will show the damage that was caused and what necessitated the stop work order on the roads that, that we just discussed.
And who took these pictures?
I think Mike Harrison, I've got that video.
If he wants to narrate, I will allow him. Before we listen to the video.
Does it need cleaning up, Mike?
It's muted.
Oh, okay. All right.
This will be phase two. We started back to phase two, working out to phase one. This is the lane drive that goes all the way through Plantation and Plantation.
Can you show us or will it show us where phase one and two start and begin?
Yes. This will be a separate video.
Since he's narrating.
The horses crossing, we're coming up on, is that Del Rio?
Yeah, Del Rio.
Del Rio.
Road to right out of video, there's not too much slag there.
That we did, correct?
Who put the slag in?
We did. I was the market.
That's where they couldn't, couldn't get to his house. That's also where they built the additional home that wasn't on the plat that we had to do a bunch of ratification to.
To the left is the...
I thought you said that was where it started.
Right here, that would be in the phase two. This will be phase one.
And all the stuff you just saw is on the developer, right, sleigh? Phase two, what you just saw?
Everything that we've just seen is, is still on Joe Edwards' developer.
Yeah.
Mike, you're coming back towards Lake Terrace.
It started at the back.
Okay, all right.
Was it phase one? Headed back to the Lake Terrace. Where you see the line of dollars where we pre-where we patched where the trucks over the last path. This is after the truck coming over there.
Mike, when you see that saw pumping, look like clay, that, that immediately draws our attention that we may not have the proper...
All right, start, who's ever got the control, stop it right there.
All kind of patches.
Stop. All right, so look, at this part from right here down to that light pole was, I guess, two years ago, Mike, on my timeframe, that all this was absolutely destroyed with, I'm talking about destroyed, destroyed, where cars were getting stuck, the whole thing was busting apart. That's what we declared emergency order on this section to go in and try to patch or halfway fix. This was the area we had to go put a bunch of time in just to get it, where you could get down it.
Fast.
Yeah, I mean, it was not too bad. I mean, I'm standing in ruts that are knee-deep.
Well, I mean, why today, I mean, they're not utilizing the other entrance down the power lines.
Yeah, and that's a question I don't have the answer to, other than, there was originally there was originally a construction road that was built on the back of that that would allow access off Church Road. Why they're not utilizing that access, I don't have all the answers to.
Is it still there?
Yes, I've read it done.
It's there, but I don't.
It's still there, Dwayne? Can you pass through it?
Say again.
You can, you can drive down it, the little house that's in there's got cars and boats and stuff in the, in the actual road.
Oh, there's a house down there?
Who owns that house? Because I tried pulling it up and it's, it's like one big parcel in Mr. Edwards'.
Yeah, Joe Edwards owns the property, that whole lot.
Is, is the road on the, that home's property now?
It's on the right away, you're the.
Big parcel and that house is on, but you drive right by it.
So they could access that? Well, I'm wondering why, I guess I want that answer too.
Well, there's two boats and four cars.
Well, it's on, on that part, it never moved.
Maybe there's somebody here today.
I can clarify some of that, yeah.
Who lives in that house. Is that Joe Edwards' house?
I think that's Joe Edwards' house. He lives right in the back of Church Road in a, like, log cabin type house.
So I wanted Mr. Gerantano's, uh, is it, is it a soft G or a hard G?
A soft.
Thank you. Mr. Gerantano, I, I mispronounce your name every time. So, uh, Mr. Gerantano is, uh, has a point of interest here because he's trying desperately to build a house on a lot that he bought from Joe Edwards many years ago before any of this business about additional plads, additional lots being sold, before any of that came up, has come up recently. Mr. Gerantano already owned lots that Mr. Edwards had sold him and he's trying to finish building houses on lots he already owns in phases, by the way, that have already been approved by the board.
And, and to back up, the development. The development that was already approved by the board.
That's right.
So the development, it's not just lots in the county, right? This is a subdivision development that was approved by the county, this phase of it. So it's not like, though it looks rural, these are, it's, it's county, right? But they're larger acre areas that was in a subdivision development, not like in a rural area that somebody just bought property on.
It's depressing to drive through there. And I, and anybody, whether you live in a thousand-square-foot house or a seventy-five-hundred-square-foot house deserves better than this. But for this, these are some of the nicest homes in Rankin County and taken care of. I mean, it's unique. That is one great area to be messed up this bad.
If I may say.
You please come to them. Introduce yourself and state your name and.
Robert Gerantano. I've lived in countryside, the first part of Palaverdy since nineteen ninety-six. My father's lived in countryside since nineteen ninety-nine. The trucks come through countryside to get to Palaverdy and nothing gets destroyed through countryside. Part one was developed in two thousand and we're still on the same initial asphalt that Joe Edwards put down there. I only have three more lots and the whole neighborhood is completed out of the eleven lots that I bought from him in two thousand and six. So we're so close to the end. I have Mr. Brian O'Callahan who has lot three. We're ready to do a custom for him. And he lives in the first part of Palaverdy. So long story short, we're only two houses away from completing the neighborhood. I've always been told by the county, when we get to seventy percent of the house, house is being completed, we're going to blacktop the whole entire thing. We're beyond seventy percent.
Yeah, so, so let me add, let me add one thing. First off, I want to say this about your stuff. The issues on the roads, though, it's been caused by some of the work that you're doing, doesn't fall necessarily on you, in my opinion, right? This, this is the developer's problem that we're having in this area. The developers are responsible for the roads and streets on that same side. So the stop work order that came in wasn't initially directed at you necessarily, but that we have to try to protect the rest of our infrastructure that's in place, that's getting destroyed. And it's getting destroyed by your work, not intentionally, but the fault relays back to the developer's side of the whole thing. That, that's kind of where we're at on the deal. So what we're trying to do is figure out the right off-ramp to get the infrastructure around you correct because you don't want to put houses on areas that you can't get to without a helicopter, right? So now, Mr. O'Callahan's an outstanding man. He may have a helicopter, he's planning on bringing it in. So the roads may not matter to him down there, right? So it, but we want to get this right. So what we're trying to do is figure out a way with the developer to get the proper roads in place to access the property that you're building on that you bought. That's not your responsibility. I don't, what we don't want to have to happen is us come in and fix this phase one area again and make you bond it to get your trucks in there because that's not, shouldn't be your problem. The problem should fall back on the developer. That's kind of where we're at on the situation. But what we're also having to do in the immediate stance is be sure that the people that are around there from a safety purpose, that if we got to get a fire truck or an ambulance or some type of emergency response vehicle into their house, we can get them there, right?
I understand.
So that, that's kind of where we're at. So the visual pictures, just so the board can see it, that, I've been out there enough times, I think I can drive there with my eyes closed, right? So I want to be sure that we're, we're taking the right action to move forward, to get it all straight. We know we're going to have to do work on phase one. Before this board and the previous board was here, somehow this got given back over to the county.
But haven't we already addressed this? This has been on for years. Why haven't we fixed the road?
That's the thing, if it would have been addressed earlier, a little bit, all this problem.
Well, 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 the part of that was that there was a letter of credit given over to the county.
That's correct.
Joe Edwards never put the final surface ware, layer down on this. So the letter of credit that was done to put the final surface layer down on phase one has never been installed.
That's right.
It's never been put.
But why are we waiting to fix it, though? I mean, two years ago, we come out here and did that, a little work.
Because, because right now, if we go fix it, it's going to get tore back up again. We wasted the money.
Not with three houses.
Two houses left is all we have.
But there's more phases.
He's talking about this night, there's another two hundred acres or so.
Right, and we've already established that.
Joe's not going to develop that. He's, he's pleading that he's broke and, uh, he's, uh, bankrupt and he's going to grant, give it to his children down the road. But I don't see him develop anything anytime soon.
Won't Joe let y'all come in off of Church Road?
Yeah, he's the one that's blocking the entrance.
I understand that, I mean.
I would be glad to tell my subs, let's go down Church Road. But if I had access to it, great, but I can't make that happen.
So he's, he told y'all he didn't want y'all coming down Church Road.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's him. I would have no problems following the rules on how to get in a construction entrance.
Yeah, i- if we had a construction entrance, that's correct.
Yes, give it to me.
So, uh, Mr. Gerantano's legal counsel's here. I want him to have an opportunity to speak on behalf of, of the, of the builder interests that are out there. Because I think Mr. Gerantano represents more than just himself. He represents any builder that wants to build in this development.
Right, he, he does. And thank you, gentlemen, I'm, I'm, my name's Andy Clark. I think y'all dealt with my wife, Elizabeth, uh, on some of your bonding stuff. I'm sorry she's not here today, she's much more of a treat than I am. But yes, everything that has been said is absolutely one-hundred percent correct. Uh, I do want to point out that back in, I believe, September of two thousand and twenty, uh, Mr. Gerantano tendered funds, uh, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to, to pay for a portion of damage that was attributable to him. And, I mean, I don't know if that's something that you guys regularly do to builders or, or what, but I mean, that seems like a pretty singular approach to him. So he's, he's cooperative, is, is what the point that I'm trying to make. He lives out there, his dad lives out there. They drive past all of this stuff to get to their, to their, uh, house and their job sites every day. And like you said, he's got three lots left in there, one of which, I believe, is currently, the slab is in place and it's ready to start framing.
It's ready.
Okay, so that part of the, the heavy lifting in, in that is over. So we're here asking for your help today. Let him get back to work. He's got to start breaking eggs to make an omelet. Uh, and he's, and he's trying to get this property improved and get, you know, taxpayers in there paying taxes to help pay for the roads. He does have one, uh, that I want to bring your attention, and I think he referenced it a minute ago, that's ready to go. Custom house, he's already sold the lot to the gentleman that's here. That is going to be a concern. There is going to be concrete that's going to need to be poured there. Hopefully, we can get this construction inch, like Robert said, he's happy to take the trucks through there if he can get through the gate to get there. That's what he wants to do.
Yeah, we, we, well, what, here, here's what, here's what, in, in my ignorant opinion on the thing, we just need the construction interest to get to the development side. We're fixing to put about five hundred grand in phase one to get the roads back up because they're not built the way they should be. So that's just going to be another issue we're going to have to deal with. But I don't want to put five hundred thousand in phase one and still driving to phase two to get to it, to get it fixed and tear that up. Unless you just want to keep.
I think everybody understands that, we don't want.
We just need.
Probably if you have seventy percent thing comes into play, you still want to put it down and tear it right back up.
Although, man, if you could put in a, if the road's halfway decent, if we could build it halfway decent, five houses being built ain't going to tear up a road.
If, if, if the original phase one, this year, was built the way it's supposed to be.
If we repair it, like you say we're going to.
If the road, if the roads. If I can, if I can turn our attention back to the real problem here, the real issue here, the issue here starts and finishes with a developer named Joe Edwards. That's right. Who was invited to be here, who contacted my office and indicated he would not appear before this board again without legal counsel and he could not find legal counsel who could be here. So he had a lawyer call me, it's a lawyer who's operates and, and practices out of Lexington, Holmes County. He had his lawyer call me. Called me from wherever he is on vacation. And a nice guy, had a good conversation with him. But the issue here is dealing with a gentleman who is supposed to be a land developer, subdivision developer, who can't bother to show up here, who didn't, who indicated he didn't have any intention of being here unless it was going to be a legal matter. And I think because we know what the issue is, and you've heard from everybody here who's spoken on this issue, that the, the biggest problems that we have here, which is construction traffic on substandard roads, could be solved if we had a legitimate construction entrance, which we have, but simply one fellow has decided he doesn't want anybody to use it.
The, the problem is also, Jay, is I just didn't want to bring, do more damage to the stuff we're already going to have to fix if there's another route in there.
So how do we make that happen?
We, we need to, we need to stop talking and start filing a lawsuit. Rankin County versus Joe Edwards. And we need to make it clear that we intend, if he wants to be a developer in Rankin County, he has to comply with our development ordinance. And you told him, if he wants to sell any more lots, there will be a construction entrance from Church Road to the property that hasn't been developed yet so that no construction traffic has to go across Countryside Drive, Lake Terrace, or Plantation Boulevard to get to those lots. They go some other way. I don't care what construction entrance he comes up with.
He could cut a note.
Knock yourself out.
It didn't matter.
Right.
But you're not, we've told him, you're not going to develop the hundred and fifty acres that's undeveloped. You're not going to have another phase of development until we have a construction entrance. And there are other requirements, by the way, but that's the biggest one. And this is the trick bag that we find. Mr. Gerantano has already bought lots in, in phase two. Y'all have already, we've already approved phase two. We have a letter of credit for phase two. We have substandard streets in phase two. And the sole issue before this board is, how do we address the substandard condition of the roads that I just named? Countryside Drive, Lake Terrace, I want, we got to keep all of those roads in our minds. Countryside Drive, this comes off of North Shore Causeway. Countryside Drive, Lake Terrace Place, Plantation Boulevard. Those roads have got to be protected because they are substandard.
Boulevard's like the main drag that for sure needs to be addressed, I would think.
We can probably get away with taking a.
Why are we even calling this Palaverdy? There's nothing out there that says Palaverdy. This is really countryside.
It's, it's the name of the subdivision, it's how it's platted.
It's the name of that phase.
That there's no sign to designate when you go into.
What is that, anyway? Is that like lonesome dove? What, I mean, what is that?
Andy, you want to say something?
I, I, I do. I just want to make clear, my, my request here today is, I guess, twofold. Is number one, the house that he's got the slab for, man, please let him finish. Let him, let him do what he's doing. Now, before we pour any additional concrete or whatever, if we can get this construction entrance open, the concrete I'm talking about on the, on the house that he's got under construction, man, great. If y'all call Monday morning and say, take the Church Road, that's where he's going to have his guys going every day from now on. Won't ever touch the countryside in Lake Terrace. That's what I'm asking here today is, is let him get started on framing on the house. He's got the slab board. And then we'll address the other before we bring concrete trucks in there. And if we get that resolved, great.
Yep.
If not, if we need to go to different.
What will it take, then what will it take? I'm asking everybody.
I think Craig said it.
Huh?
I think Craig said it.
A lawsuit.
We need, we need to file suit. I, I need authorization to file suit.
What's it going to take for us to be able to help this man?
I'm, I'm very satisfied now that we know, by the way, just to our, to our defense, we, we did not know specifically where Mr. Gerantano was on the construction, the process of construction on the house that he's got coming out of the ground. I'm not talking about Mr. O'Callahan's lot. I'm talking about the one that he's building right now that we put the stop work order on. Yeah, so now that we know that that slab is finished, uh, most of your, uh, construction traffic that would be problematic for us has, is over. There's pads in, the slab's in.
So the only other thing would be maybe a lumber truck.
Maybe the lumber.
Lumber, brick and roof.
And then the rest of it would just be, you know, contractor vehicle, you know, truck.
Hey, Mike, on that same side, if he was taking lumber delivers, brick delivers, stuff like that, can you split that up into loads that wouldn't be as damaging to the area if you got to come in that way?
They can if they'll do it, yeah.
Yeah, Daniel, I mean, we hadn't had much problems once we get past the concrete stage of the houses on any of that. It usually gets tore up in the dirtwork because there's quite a bit of dirtwork that's got to be done out there.
And concrete truck.
And then the concrete trucks, usually once we get to the building phase, we don't have a lot of impact on the road.
Hey, Mr. Gerantano, let me ask this right here. Would you be on that same side if we get that going? Just to speak to your lumber and your brick people on loads coming in, wait, be sure we're inside some good parameters.
That's not a heavy load.
Yeah, unless they overload some, right? I mean, you know, try to cut that.
They're not, those, those are, I mean, they're just not heavy loads.
With the brick, the brick.
Well, it depends on how much brick he's got.
I think he'd agree to take every, every protective measure he possibly can. We're just looking for five fingers now.
So what I would suggest, it's how, how to clean this up, I, just one motion if I can. Authorization to sue Joe Edwards into next millennium, okay? That, number one. Number two, authorize the, the, um, the removal or release of the stop work order on the lot that Mr. Gerantano has under construction. Uh, and then whatever authorization, Daniel, that you think is appropriate to your road manager to, to perform remediation work on the streets that we talked about, primarily Plantation Boulevard, in both phase one and phase two, but with this caveat, any work that we do in phase two, any work, I, I want, I want a copy of the work order. I want to know what equipment was used, what labor was used. I, I need a good itemization of every dollar we spend for any remediation work associated with phase two. And I want you guys to understand, phase one is ours. We took phase one. That doesn't mean I'm not going to make it an issue in the litigation. I intend, as a part of our lawsuit, to argue to the court that he did not construct the streets of phase one to our standards and he knew he didn't. And we found out about it once this construction activity really ramped up last year.
Because it should, because the road should have held up.
It should have held up. And we're going to try to recover or recoup those expenditures.
That would allow Mr. Gerantano on Monday to resume his work as far as lumber, brick, stuff like that.
I, I would say as soon as we can get it released today, uh, he would be released even today to, to move forward if he has anything to say.
I'd say thank you for allowing me to maybe pick up a lot sixteen and go on with the framing, but I have one more house to build really, which is Mr. O'Brien. And I could be done in the neighborhood until lawsuits are, uh.
And I, I think we can.
Let's come back in, take it back up.
Quinn, are you wanting to pour? Quinn, are you wanting to do the framing and the concrete?
I would be okay with him scheduling with Mike Harrison's group and they work together on the trucks that are the heavy trucks.
My recommendation is, I mean, we got, we got a pretty good bit of damage on the road right now. What I would like to see is I'll keep up with all, everything.
Come in a different way.
With Mr. Flood. But if he's got one lot, let's let him go ahead and get a dirt guy in there and get his, get his slab done. Because we still got time this summer to fix the road before winter. But if we prolong his thing, then we're going to try to win it.
I hadn't thought about that.
And I'll be done with the next two until either.
Litigation's done or whatever.
If he got his lots, let him go.
Alright, Mr. Slay, then that'll be my motion.
And we'll not be foolish about it, you know, going in there with heavy trucks the day after a large rain.
Yeah, and I guess the main, the main thing is that you just coordinate those trucks coming in with Mike's office so he knows what's happening so we can limit the damage as much as possible. as possible.
I'm calling as soon as I see the damage too.
And that, and that's what we asked, that's what, that's what got us the last time. Because the damage was happening and nobody reported, so it just went nuclear. Yeah, yeah, I got you, yeah.
One, one point, I want Mr. O'Callahan to have an opportunity to speak to. Let me get, uh, let me get a motion done so that I know we get it done, if you don't mind, and then we'll, we'll move forward. Uh, so, Mr. Gerantano, we told, at the last board meeting, we told the neighbors that if they saw construction traffic, they were free to contact us and let us know they saw it, and so that we knew what was going on. And I think they've been doing that.
A lot of neighbors are my side too. I live in the neighborhood, I'm friendly, I'm, I'm, you know, all these are my neighbors here.
Right.
And everyone, I side them.
We, we were trying to, to cast a wide net, just to make sure everybody understood, we cared about their problems, we wanted to address them, and I think they've taken us up on it, am I right? Okay, so we've been hearing a lot of chatter about construction traffic. That, that's just fair warning. They cannot, in their minds, separate out whose construction traffic are we talking about here? It's an equal opportunity destroyer of roads. And so, prepare yourself to have to be a part of the education process out there so that the residents understand, we're allowing a limited amount of construction activity, none of which involves Joe Edwards, okay? That needs to be clearly understood among the residents out there. Uh, and then you're, you're welcome to go ahead and tell the residents out there, to the extent you feel like you need to, that the county is taking action formally against Joe Edwards now, okay? So, Mr. O'Callahan, I've got a motion that I can have approved, and I'm scared to let anybody else say anything until I can get that done. Are you okay if I get my motion? Because I think it's going to cover everything that you need, I promise.
I make a motion to add on to the agenda.
All right.
But on that motion, you want to walk back through that one more time?
Yes, sir. So your motion would be this, you're, you're going to authorize the lifting of any stop work order on a permit that's pending, right? You're going to lift that immediately now. All right, you're, you're going to not withhold any permits that are not yet issued for two houses, I think.
Just one more.
Just one more? So we have a permit on?
I'm going to get a permit on him once we get the prints turned in.
And you got the, you got the permit on Mr. O'Callahan?
Not yet, we're waiting.
That's the one, that's the one he's got to get.
That's the one he's got.
He's got one existing now, the one that's got the concrete.
Okay.
And I need to get him out of, out of the ground, and then I'll be dead in the water until we resolve where we need to go.
Yeah, so are we saying that we don't need a permit to get us to slab?
He needs one.
One.
Mr. O'Callahan.
He already has one existing.
So if you'll clear him to get that permit, and then start back on the road.
Very good. I'm totally lost, but y'all are not, so that's good.
No, no, and I think you're right, we're going to allow him to finish up the work the one that's happening, and this one here, he's going to get kicked off and done as fast as he possibly can as far as concrete work, heavy trucks, stuff like that, but-
Is Mr. O'Callahan the slab that just got pulled?
No, no, he's the new one. He's the customer, he's got the helicopter pad coming in, right on the backside, but, but-
Y'all know what's going on here.
I do want to say one other thing, at the same time this is happening, part of the encouragement needs to go back to Mr. Edwards to open up the construction route, because you may not even have that route of, of need of Mr. Callahan's coming back through the additional spot.
May not be an issue.
If we can get the construction route going, we still proceed with our litigation on the money that we're having to spend, but that's a tie-in to the same issue. I'm not saying that works, I'm just saying that needs to be the pathway.
Yes. So, so we're going to lift stop work order, we're going to allow the, the, the permits that are necessary that we've talked about here today, that you guys understand what those are, we're going to authorize litigation against the developer.
And strongly suggest we open a construction route into those areas.
That'll be a part, that's already a part of what we've described, it will be in the lawsuit itself as a request that the court order him to do that, okay? So that authorization needs to be in place, and then you need to authorize Mike to take whatever actions are necessary in his judgment and Tim's judgment, in the board's judgment, to, to bring those public streets and the portion of the Phase Two streets up to some level of safe passage for emergency response. That's the, that's the motion.
So do I have the motion to add this to the?
I'll second Jay's deal.
Jay made the motions, Cross, Ed, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carried, ad. I do have a motion to-
Yeah, I'll make a motion to lift the work order and stop work order and proceed with one house. And file the lawsuit.
And file the lawsuit, and everything that was in the original thing that Slay said, the original motion to add to the agenda.
I'm sure I left something out.
We're making a motion to approve Jay's original motion that Andy added it to the agenda on, I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like so.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your help. Appreciate that.
Thank you for doing all that. My name's John Woods, I live at 177 Plantation Boulevard. So, the video started right at my house, I live directly adjacent to the house that Mr. Gerantano has under construction.
You're rubbing it dirt in front of your own house. No road, it's just dirt.
Just, well, mostly rock, yeah, it's hard for me and my dog to take a walk. But I want Mr. Gerantano to get started, sooner he gets started, the sooner he finishes. The construction road, I appreciate, but it's not going to help me because it's-
It'll make it worse.
He's got to get, still get by me.
But, but we are coming into your area, Mike's going to come in.
Thank you for that, my wife would really appreciate that a lot more than me. Uh, I'd like to make the suggestion, it may be out of order, Mr. Slay, but I did talk to Joe Edwards Wednesday night, he called me to talk about things, and he has some willingness to help, it's kind of unusual, but you might try a contract between the county and Mr. Edwards and a buyer, I won't call the buyer's name, but there's a buyer who wants to buy some of the land for Mr. Edwards, that he can't buy now because you're going to block it, and I appreciate that, that's good. Uh, but if you would allow that gentleman, the buyer, to buy some of that land in terms of lots from Mr. Edwards, and then Mr. Edwards would pledge that all that money then goes to the county.
Yeah, and, and let me, yeah, let me add one thing, we gave him a pathway to do that, through his banks and stuff like that, so we're just waiting to hear back from Mr. Edwards.
He's going to tell you no.
Okay, well then that is-
So, but he's willing to sell some land and give that money to the county to take care of the roads, and what you could do is-
Yeah, I would imagine, all that's going to be tied up in his lawsuit.
Yeah.
Well, I'm trying to avoid the lawsuit because-
That's our tax money.
Being as old as I am, litigation takes a long time.
It, it does, and it, and it costs a lot of money.
A lot of money.
Yeah.
So, you can do that, and then restrict the buyer from ever getting a building permit on anything he buys until you, the county, are satisfied with the roads, then everybody might win and might avoid a lot of litigation.
We're going to look at every angle.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, appreciate you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. My, my door is always open, my phone works, for any conversations that might make sense for this board and for the taxpaying citizens of Rankin County, they're welcome to call me and talk about any ideas they may have about how to avoid unnecessary litigation. It, it occurs to me that, um, that, that the avoidance of unnecessary litigation could have been accomplished years ago.
Right. All right, Mr. Callahan, I'm going to translate for him when he comes up here and talks, but come on up. I've known him for a while, the reason I'm jabbing him, so, I'm going to translate this for best you can, watch this, watch this Rankin County accent. Go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I really don't have a whole lot to add to what has been said, but I appreciate you doing it. Sometimes I don't know what to expect when I walk into rooms like this, but seems to be very fair. You happen to come from, or work at the largest road builders in North America, so I know what you're dealing with, probably some of the worst soil that you can work with, um, but I appreciate what you're doing, and, uh, very satisfied with what I've heard here today, so.
We're going to get you going. You see that Rankin County accent he's got? It's nice.
That's north Rankin there.
That's north Rankin, yeah. Some of you, some of you always end up north very often, but that's it, yeah, 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 yeah.
All right, Mr. Key.
All right.
Okay. Move on. Appreciate y'all. Y'all more than welcome to stay, or?
Phil Elizabeth, I said hi.
See you, bud.
All right, very briefly, um, we're working on the budget, so I just wanted to prepare you guys for our next board meeting, um, we're ready to start talking details, um, and I just want to let you know it's coming up very quickly, so, if y'all have any questions or comments.
Hey, do we have a rough, a rough plan on when we're going to have those long budget meetings? Like timeframe, is it the work session next meeting? When's the one we can schedule for the whole day or two or three?
It's going to probably be August the first, which is the, the first Monday in August, unless you're not going to be here.
I was trying to plan my vacation, thought to be here on that day, right? I'm just kidding.
I'm just trying to prepare you guys, um, there are a lot of requests this year that you probably haven't had in the past that will-
Every year.
Yeah. So, and I do have one item of additional business that popped up last month.
All right, go ahead.
Um, back in October of 21, uh, you guys authorized, uh, premium pay or incentive pay, uh, to the county staff, and there was a bill passed this year that will allow the county to recoup a portion of that, uh, monies that was paid to certified law enforcement and officers and certified firefighters. So what I'm asking for you is to, to, um, think about granting me the authority, uh, to apply for reimbursement from the Department of Public Safety for premium pay paid to the law enforcement and firefighters of the county, and also apply for funds for other eligible individuals that we did not pay the monies to.
That's a good job, Keith, I'll make that motion add, add after the agenda.
I got a motion to add that to the agenda by Mr. Cross, and second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like so.
Make a motion to approve?
Sure.
Motion by Daniel, second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carried.
Great job there.
This has nothing to do with ARPA. Not $1 of ARPA is what we're talking about. This goes back before ARPA, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, that's what that relates to, okay? So I don't, I don't want any confusion over what we're talking about here. You did not authorize premium pay, uh, this is not what he's talking about, this authorization of premium pay, that's not related to ARPA.
Yeah, and I'm sure there's one thing you've probably seen, I don't know if, we don't have any full-time firemen in the county, but I think you could almost, yeah, so I mean, there's a deal out there, an elicitor passed for $1,000 for all certified firemen to get $1,000 pay on top of some other stuff like that. I would like to see the guys that we have at our EOC that are, hold that same certification, that serve, serving that same function. There's a database out there now that the Fire Marshal's Office has, that you put in their information, it goes to DFA and they decide whether that's approved or not. I would like to see the EOC guys put into that, because I know we've got, um, at least three of them are certified firemen also, so that can be $1,000 directed to them for the cert, they, they passed a deal that was only for certified firemen for $1,000 premium pay on that, so we can turn that in, um, but I think it is-
Mr. Cross, we're checking, if we've done all that, I don't think it's going to be applicable to us.
I'd make them tell us no, though.
That what I think is pretty, in the, in the legislation itself, because you've already paid us in excess of $1,000, twenty-two or whatever it was, if you hadn't have paid us anything at all, then we would have been eligible for that. We have one person that we thought potentially could be, and that is Justin Allen, uh, because he is a certified firefighter, however, and he did not receive any additional pay at all when he was with UNC, so at this point, it's applicable to him, he could, because he was a volunteer at Walters Volunteer Fire Department, however, from the state fire coordinator, the information we're getting, it is absolutely 100% not applicable to any volunteer firefighter in the state of Mississippi.
Yeah, it's not, it's just the, the question where it applies to effective July, and it's not back date, the difference, the reason I kind of don't necessarily totally disagree with what you're saying, it's only effective for those that are employed as certified firefighter on July 1st. It doesn't go back to July 1st of last year when they could have been serving. So if they were serving in effective time of July 1st from there on, that's when they're claiming the date of the certified firing. So it's not going back on a premium pay of what was previously given, it was from this point forward on July 1st, if you're a certified firefighter, you turn this into DFA and let them make the ruling on it. So what I'm saying is, I would make the opinion, let them turn it down.
If you think you're going to get argued from me for you to throw $1,000, it's not happening.
All right, any other?
So exclude word from that $1,000 request, you know?
The county will be reimbursed.
Yeah.
All right, you got-
Because it's set for July 1st.
We can be reimbursed, and we're going to look into the issue, is additional funding available to our guys? So reimbursement will be paid, and then them being eligible for something else are two different things, so good word. I, I agree with Daniel, we need to make them say no.
Additional business?
Uh, I, I just need some direction on this, uh, so we have a large solar farm going in in Scott County, thousand acres I believe are plus, uh, I remember meeting or something, we talked about this, Craig. Anyway, we relayed to them about routes and stuff like that, trucks are supposed to be routed coming down 481 down a state highway going in Scott County. They seem to be ignoring that order. They're using high road, and we've got a midway probably 10, 12 miles long. And they're starting to get, starting to get some impact, over a million tons of materials got to come in over there, and they're cutting through this because it's short.
I was over there this week.
We already have to start repairing the road.
I don't know how many, but the people that live there say it's hundreds a day. While I was there-
Eighteen wheelers are we talking about?
Yes, eighteen wheelers. Dump trailers.
Dump trailers, dump trucks, I mean, they're just trying to-
There's not one out of hearing distance before another one's coming. I'm going to say, one every minute or two, two minutes.
Sounds like 49.
And they have another route. They also had another place and turned it down that was on the corner, kinda-
But to dig from?
Of two, no, to put their solar-
Solar farm.
Where two state highways are, and that place wasn't suited, I don't know if it wasn't, but in lieu, they're going by that place and getting on a county road and traveling miles when there is a state road that they are supposed to be taking that comes in from a different direction.
It's just a further route for them.
I'm sure it's a couple of miles further.
But anyway, uh, me and Tim went up there and looked at this other day, went into Scott County, I met the gentleman that's overcharged at the site, uh, he pretty well knew what I was pulling up there for, and he was sending out an email, but what I've seen is, is they, they're not enforcing the route, so they're just telling their people to do this. I don't believe we have no mechanism for us to do something to stop them from going down our route. I'm, I'm looking at Craig and kind of looking around here because-
We have brought a correction under 6574, which tells the board supervisor, you, you have the right to protect your public roads against extraordinary damage, and if your road manager is telling you that the road's being damaged, you can take action. The limitation on it is, there's no real, and there's no penalties that you will find in that code section, you're kind of left to your own devices to figure out, well, what are you going to do? Uh, my suggestion would be that we put whoever, uh, is in control of the site there on notice that, that we're going to hold them responsible for the damage and put it on them to enforce the appropriate route.
Do we need to put some type of signs up there? No construction?
Well, I mean, I mean, like those days, we went up there Brad before they're coming out. I mean, they're going off in the ditch, turning back into Rankin County, and I mean, you can see there's been a mini trucks doing that. Nobody's going back to the left on the route they are. I'm not saying they hadn't tried to correct it, some of them probably are, but these[1717.89] I'm not saying they haven't tried to correct it, some of them probably are, but these truck drivers looking at it like Steve said, this route probably cuts a couple of miles off their route, so I'm sure they paying these guys by the load. And so with many loads they can haul, that's the more money they make, and they just cutting through the county, but...
My, my thought would be, we put a no truck sign on Midway.
Both ends.
Just use our haul route.
And there may be, there may be, I don't know.
Do we have a, just go back, use that haul route, no, wait a minute.
No, can't.
We don't, they, we got, they've done that down, didn't they?
Well, actually, I think it was for plated some reasons. But we, uh, and I don't know, I just investigated. At the meeting, uh, our conference, one of the guys was saying that why didn't we have our own person with the road that handles those? And I said, how? They said, well, they're kinda a deputy or something.
That's exactly right, Steve, they're deputies.
I mean, I can't, I can't ask them when they are short people for a deputy to send out there and wait on a truck. We get the calls, and if Mike has an employee or even that guy in the orange shirt, uh, you know, he kinda does a lot of different things. If we got a call and you, I don't want an employee and have a whole division or anything like that, but just have somebody.
Well, and you remember, we, Slay introduced a regulation that was going in, a ticket, I don't wanna call it a ticketable, but a, a citing violation where our deputies didn't have to actually do it. But you had a citing violation that went through that came in, in conjunction with that haul ordinance that died a fiery death.
I'll remember.
But we had a, a deal where we could do it, but you had to have a certified officer do it, right? Now, word is, the guy in the Skittle outfit in the back is a certified officer that could issue a citation. As crazy as that may sound, right?
Yeah.
He, he does have those things, he goes, Mike's a sworn guy for, so my point is, you have that ability, but the board's gotta go down the, the issue of having the citation.
You currently do not have an ordinance structure that would allow that.
Can we look into it?
Yes, sir.
And, and, and oversee it, I want a reasonable person, I mean, I don't wanna go out there and write a hundred tickets a day. I mean, we don't gel up the courthouse.
Do you wanna be on that list?
I wanna be on the committee. I mean, I don't wanna be the one to pull the trucks over unless everybody else just says I'm gonna do it. But I think if there's at least a notion that there's something can happen if I do go down this road.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, who the hell... Yeah, I think, I think once somebody gets a one or two warnings on this road, I think it's gonna stop.
It's, it's this road this month.
Another road the next month.
Next month it's another road.
Right. What, what we typically see, and the problems we're gonna have, is that not all of our hauling activity is created equal. Uh, we've got guys that haul heavy loads that do a really good job. They, they try to work with us. Most of those guys are in the timber industry, and, and we wanna be careful not to single out folks that, that really do try to work with us and help us, staying on routes and watching for damage and that type of thing. So we get good, we get good feedback that way. I agree with Mike, I think if we put some no truck signs up and if we have a presence there, even if they don't have authority, just to be able to stop them and tell them you're on a no truck route. What are you doing on a no truck route? If I catch you here again, we're gonna get law enforcement involved. I think if the word gets out that that's how we're gonna handle this, then in the short term, we solve this problem to some degree and we can start working on a, a better solution where we actually can enforce something through the justice court process. And that's where it would go, Steve, just to help you round it out.
Okay.
You would have an ordinance that prohibits truck traffic of a, of a specific description on defined roads. And if they're caught there, you've got the ability then to issue a citation that justice court enforces.
The difference is, they gotta state a road, a road they can't travel. In a lot of cases, there, there's, it's not available.
Right.
Hey, in that case, you gotta do, I mean, this happens, yeah.
I know, but in this case, I mean, it's no blame.
But it's the same, it's the same issue, we had that same deal with people coming out of the dirt pit at Mount Ham, whatever, coming down twenty-five. We asked them to take a state aid road, which is four seventy-one, they didn't wanna do it. They wanted to cut through Hollybush Road, destroyed Hollybush Road that we had to pay for, when it could go one more mile to four seventy-one, which is state aid, and take it. We had them come down twenty-five, trying to get to Vernon Jones out there in District Five. Is District Five still in Rankin County?
Yes, sir.
So they were trying to get to District Five, and instead of going down twenty-five or Spillway Road, they were cutting through Farmington Station, U-Word Boulevard, destroying that off the state area. So we've encouraged them as best we can to get on state aid roads, and that's why we've had to try to do the haul routes and it just died a fiery death.
All right, you gonna get us some signs?
Yeah, I'll get some signs up today on Midway, uh, you know, Steve just let the farmers, I know it's a big farming community out there, and they're getting close to grain. They're gonna probably reach out to you. We're gonna scu, it's good, you know, the harvest permit.
Well, yeah, I have to have a...
All of the, all our act folks are exempt anyway by state law.
No.
That's right.
Farmers, you can't stop them.
We can't stop those guys, and nobody wants to, and we understand that those, that's, that's seasonal. So they need to go through. It's, you know, our signs would have to be eighteen by eighteen. Put all of the exclusions and exemptions about what no truck means. So we're gonna have to use common horse sense, we're trying to stop whatever this...
Yeah, and our loggers, our loggers are doing their permits, you know, even the ones that's coming out there, so that's not an issue. We just got to give something right now temporarily, or Sheriff's Department's got something to, to pull somebody over with, or anybody to pull somebody over with, because...
The no truck signs will help us, that gives us the notice to do that.
All right.
All right.
We can't issue tickets.
Anything else?
We can't issue tickets.
Yeah, I know. One item I'd just like to, uh, discuss with the board. You know, with, uh, asphalt cost being what they are, um, our money's coming up soon that we should be receiving from our ARPA funds. And I intend to spend mine, or a good portion of it, with the City of Flowood and City of Pearl. But to do that, we need to do an interlocal. Rather than us taking responsibility doing the projects, I'd rather just give them the money and let them deal with the headache of it, so.
Jay, can I clarify one thing, so nobody gets confused? That Jay's talking about the DFA funding that came through the Senate bill? That's, it's the eight billion that we got from the state legislature, that, that's through ARPA. That's, that's, that's DFA, that's DFA funding that we got as part of the legislature. So I didn't want y'all to get confused about something to do with ARPA, that's, that's actually separate.
Eight million, but ten million.
That's eight million that we got from the legislature.
Yeah, but in order to be able to do that, though, we have to do an interlocal with each city, for them to be able to take the funds, or for us to be able to give it to them. So I, I would like to put that on our next agenda, or get Craig to work with their attorneys to draft a, an interlocal.
I think that'd be the thing to do.
I think we should be getting that money in October at the latest, maybe.
October or November, Jay, is what they're telling us.
Yeah. So that way they can be ready to get around.
They'll take the load off of us.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it.
Right, and plus the overages too, yeah. So rather than saying, hey, we want you to do this road, this road, this road, and it, you know, if it's over, they can cover it.
That's right.
All right, that was all.
That was it?
Is that something that we could add today? Does anybody have any strong opposition to go ahead and adding that as an action item today?
I don't, I thought you, was, is something you kinda need to work through?
It's, it's on me to get with legal counsel for the respective municipalities and get an interlocal in place. And so now would be the time to start working on that, because it's gonna take three months to get an interlocal approved. So it, it's, that, that's why I'm asking you to go ahead and do it today, so I can go ahead and get started.
Okay. You wanna do it, Craig?
I'm good with it.
So you wanna make a motion to add it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to add it, I agree.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Bishop, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? Not, all in favor? Yeah, all opposed, like aye.
I'll make a motion to, uh, give our attorney permission to draft an interlocal for the City of Pearl, City of Flowood, to expend my, whatever funds.
It's one point six, and I need to know, um, Jay, you and I need to talk about, y'all don't care how it gets broken down, so let me and Jay...
What you're talking about is the eight million state gave.
It's the eight million DFA funding.
So we would, I thought we were putting all that, I don't, okay.
No, he's not talking, he's not talking about all the eight million.
No, no, he, basically, that'd be dividing it back out into five districts in one point six million. Well, I thought divisional talk was eight million, it was going to civil, I'm just talking about the discussion. So we're not doing that, so...
Well, it's gonna be asphalt.
You can do it, put it away.
It's for asphalt.
Okay, so everybody's getting one point, so basically, every district's getting one point six million for paving, with the decisions now.
You, you guys can decide how you want to divvy up the plans.
Yeah, that's not the same plan we talked about then.
That's...
Okay.
I thought the plan was used to get this money.
Yeah, I...
It was referenced.
I thought that's what the bill was, to take the City Link plan and ask for the money.
Doing what he's doing here, he doesn't get the funding that we get, because he has very few county miles, most of the time. So I'm not at all suggesting that Jay don't do what he said and what this motion says. For the other four of us, I think we should go, and if I don't get an inch of it, I just don't get it, but I'll get it next year, because a plan is a five-year plan.
Right.
And it's an intelligent, I mean, it goes by engineers and people that says, this is what this road needs this year or next year. With no plan, how can we succeed?
Right, so there's, there's two ways to look at this situation, as I appreciate it. Using a, a straight civil link approach and forcing it through your plan necessarily will exclude District Five. And it's because District Five does not have enough...
The city's paying it.
Yeah, absolutely. So it, it becomes more of a city-controlled issue and less of a county-controlled issue when you look at it that way. So a, a, a way to fairly allocate would be exactly what Steve has just indicated. Let Jay work with the municipalities for some portion of that funding that is adequately representative of his district. And let the rest of you guys look at the civil link plan and work amongst yourselves to figure out what's the best way to fairly and adequately spread it through the civil link plan, if that's what y'all choose to do, so that each of the districts receives some benefit out of that funding. That, it's money that's been handed to us, it's not taxpayer money.
Confuse me then, because we're doing it, we divide that eight million, it's basically one point six per district. So when you say that Jay use a portion, that wouldn't be right, Jay gets the one point six.
Yeah, I, I was just of the, and I may have read a thing wrong. When we asked the legislature for money, I was of the impression we were asked for, I don't remember how much the total was we asked for.
We asked for ten.
We asked for ten million dollars to be a, for civil link paving, that's what I thought we asked them for.
But it wasn't, it wasn't, uh, identified specifically.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't really say paving.
This was different than the last time.
So, so I guess...
You're right, we made it a county program, a, and, and the, uh, the, the benefit of making it a county program is it's a lot easier for the legislature to support it.
Right, it wasn't, uh...
What I'm telling you, and what I'm, what I was, what I was trying to indicate there was, if you look at our civil link plan, it is a county plan, but District Five does not commensurately share in the benefit under the civil link pa, plan. That's not the fault of District Five, it's just the way District Five is organized, it's mostly municipality.
Okay, I, I was just, I guess my, I was of the impression, and I may have totally misunderstood it, that the eight million dollars was coming back and being applied to the civil link plan. If that's not what it's coming back for, then I'm misunderstanding.
We presented that, it was more, it was gonna be a lot more flexibility with this than before.
Didn't matter where, right? Okay.
Daniel, when we presented this, there was a lot more flexibility doing it this way than it was before when we had civil link. And it came under that civil link wording, but it was not, I remember we talked about that. This, this made it so much more flexible to kinda use as you...
Yes.
Wouldn't have to stay right with that one thing.
So what we're doing is, just so I understand it, is we're taking the eight million in October, and I know we're not on the beat system type stuff, we're on, it goes to the entire county, but we're gonna try to allow
It to be split equally.
Five divided by eight million.
Try to apportion it across the districts in such a way that all the taxpayers have been given.
I just wanna be sure.
Right.
I didn't realize that.
I don't think there's anything different we've always done, I think.
But we're not supposed to do our money that way, as, as...
Right.
Like, we're not in the beat system anymore, so as a whole, we don't do that, I mean, we're not supposed to do it.
That's why I was thinking...
But this is...
But we still have political boundaries.
Right, this is a one time, I understand, this is one time, but we're, as a whole, that's the whole reason they want us to be a unit system and not a beat system.
That's correct.
I mean, if...
We're doing it as a unit all over the county.
There you go.
All right. Okay, well, we covered, you, you covered Jay's deal.
You're just taking one point six million dollars in October and appropriate to the cities, right?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take what y'all tell me is the amount that needs to be applied to what Jay has just asked you guys to authorize. I don't know what that number is yet.
Sounds like it's...
I did the math in my head.
Flowood is supposed to get a million, City of Pearl's gonna get six hundred thousand. That's how I would request it to be done.
So you're wanting to add, well, the money we get into eight million, one point six million of it, and those broken down that way?
Right.
Okay. I'm good, well, you just waiting for a vote now, I mean that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I now know what I need to put in the interlocal.
We need to vote on that.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, we, we got a motion.
We've already got a motion now.
We got a motion, second, I made a second.
I, I can't present the AG's office with an interlocal that hasn't been formally approved in, in the minutes as an approved document, so I, I have to have action on this to do an interlocal.
Do I have a motion?
We got a motion.
We already did, yeah, I seconded it. No, we already added it, we already added it.
Any more discussion then?
No, we, we already added it, and then we, we were approving it, and you made the motion, I seconded it.
That's right, all right, yeah.
And then we had discussion.
Are you good on that, just?
That's what I was thinking, it's just add.
Okay, I, I'll definitely make a motion to approve doing the interlocal.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, any other additional bu, business? Ms. Bridget, you need anything? Do we have a need for executive session?
Hey, the only thing I wanted to say was, Judge, you wanna talk, or you, you come in the executive session, or are you?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll execute the executive session.
Yeah, we're fixing to get in there. All right, do I? We got a need for an executive session?
Yes, sir.
Personnel and litigation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make the motion. I'll make, I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Cross, seconded by Mr. Morrison. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like aye.
We'll get a restraining real quick.